I'd like to call to order the January 18th, 2018, meeting of the Barnstable Town Council. Please note that tonight's meeting is recorded and broadcast on Channel 18 and that in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, I must inquire whether anyone is recording this meeting and if so, to please make their presence known. Seeing none, please silence your devices. Madam Clerk, may we have the roll call?
Counselors, Breeden Bender, present.
Crocker.
Present.
Cullum.
Here.
Dagwan.
Here.
Flores.
Here.
Rapkisetti.
Present.
Hebert.
Present.
Leveck.
Present.
Neary.
Schnep.
Present.
Stein-Hilber.
Here.
Tinsley.
Wallace.
Here.
Thank you very much. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before we get into public comment, we have a special guests here with us tonight. I was having a conversation with Councilor Cullum a few weeks back, a variety of issues, but one of the things that she brought forward was the idea of periodically having folks come in from our community that are volunteering, that are working with our youth, that really go above and beyond and to recognize them as a community hero. And I'd like to ask the council to do some thinking with some folks that you might be aware of, that you'd like to have come in, because I'd like to have it as a regular agenda item throughout this year. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Councilor Cullum to introduce our guest tonight.
Hello. Well, I'm very happy that Keith Rosery, Grand Master Keith Rosery, is here tonight to show us what some of his students can do, and those students are here too. I'm very proud that my son is one of them, Dante. So I'm going to turn it over to the Grand Master right now, and he can let it rip, and then later on, I'll come back with some comments. Excellent.
Thank you. It's nice to be here. I'm here tonight to showcase some of my students.
Yeah.
Showcase some of the students here. Our A-plus program is a special program. We work with kids from age four to 18. We do teach older children, but it's not part of our A-plus program. The A-plus program is a great alternative to some of the electronics that are out there. We are losing our kids to electronics and technology, and the physical activity level from when we were kids has diminished greatly. Not only has the physical activity diminished, but the whole lack of respect and manners and just basic virtues, a lot of the kids are lacking based on the fact of, you know, a lot of it's not their fault. A lot of them have single-parent families, they're latchkey kids or whatever. We like to be that bridge that brings them back. So we work on family values as well as physical exercise. A lot of them compete. We've had 14 world champions in the last four years, and they're all from Cape Cod. So I have the record for, our studio has a record for the most kids who have made the U.S. National Team. We had 10 in one year, and that says something about the program. So at this point, we'd like to get started. Could I have Devonte and Dante come up with your staffs, please? Now, we could show you kicks and punches and flips and throws, but today, we're going to focus on weapons. The first weapon we learn in our style, which is the Seven Arts System. I have a black belt in seven different styles, and this is one of the forms from our Seven Arts System. Back up one step. Bowels. Ready position.
Fire!
This is basic staff form number two. We're going to do it by count so that they can stay together and you can really watch the movement. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29. Stop position.
Fire!
Attention. And bowels. Have a seat. Have a seat, please. Thank you. AJ will be performing Single Broadsword. Don't try this at home. You all might want to duck down in the front row on this one. He's only dropped it four times today. As you can see, besides homework and all of their chores at home, they've been putting a lot of time in. The time and effort that these kids put in is so great. We sponsor probably five to seven kids a year who can't afford it, so we don't let that be an obstacle in our studio. If a kid can't afford it, we make sure they get their equipment and we make sure that they, as long as they're training and they're doing well in school and they're behaving themselves. The main point of our studio is to really have the children be at their optimum as far as physical health, mental well-being, physical fitness, and being good citizens and role models. We have a leadership program that we're starting. We also have a bully program that we do, because between the cyberbullying and all the things that are going on now, kids need something to be able to combat all these things with, and not just martial arts, physical, but verbal skills and social skills also. So, starting at four years old, you say, "What kind of social skills do they have?" Well, it's the first time that they're actually with other children alone with the Grand Master. I tell the parents they have to wait out in the lobby, and the kids are on their own for the first time, and you can see the results. Do we have any more time or questions? What are we going to do next?
Does anyone have any questions for Keith? Or maybe I can just say a couple words about why I chose him? Is that okay?
Yeah, that's great.
Okay. So, the idea came to me that we should start reconnecting as a council to our community and have our community reconnect with us too, since they're the ones who put us here in the first place. And I've been doing a lot of work over the years as a counselor with prevention programs, and the one common thread that all the prevention programs, whether they're in school or out of school, whether it's the YMCA Achievers Program or whatever, the one element they always, always talk about is self-esteem and confidence. Now, I mean, I'm no stranger to rules. I can make the neighbors brush their teeth if I yell loud enough, I promise you that. But I can just say that from my son Dante being a student in this class, the lessons that he's learned are lessons that kids don't get anymore. They have teachers acquiescing to every little need they have, and I can tell you that my son acts out in class sometimes. But in karate, he sits still and he does what he's told. I just think it fills, it fulfills a real, really important part of our society that we don't talk about anymore, which is that there's one gold medal winner at the Olympics. There's one. And hard work and determination and failure, yes, can get you there. And the belt system is fantastic. Dante will be testing next week for his green belt. We're all really excited for that. It gives him a sense of achievement and pride, self-respect, self-esteem, confidence, that goes far beyond that little dojo. It goes to soccer, it goes to math, it goes to English, it goes to speaking Spanish, it goes to self-esteem when you're in a foreign country and you don't really know how to act. So all these things, it occurs to me, makes my kid very well-rounded, and I want to thank you for being a community leader, and I want to thank you for embracing, not only, they're all boys here tonight, but there's a lot of girls at the dojo. It's too bad Abby couldn't be here. She was just accepted to Mass Maritime, right?
Full scholarship.
Full scholarship. Because it's a place where kids can really excel, and if they're not into team sports, they can excel on their own. And it's all capabilities and all abilities. Many kids with disabilities, many kids with special needs, and it's just a really great spot for children to be able to find their place in the world. And as I said, all of those characteristics are used later in life as career-building things. That's what makes us a success, is hearing, "No, that's not good enough. Please try harder. You can get that belt, but not today." These are all really important things. So, in a world where everyone gets a medal all the time, and, you know, everyone gets a round of applause for everything they do, I think it's really important that we have goals that we work toward, that we plug away at on a regular basis, because I have them for myself, and I execute every day trying to get there, whether it's miniscule or not. Let's see, what else did I want to say? The other thing that I love about this program is that I know that when Dante's 15 and faced with a situation that might be scary for him, that you'll be the voice in the back of his head. It'll be you or me. But I'm thinking it'll be you. Because, you know, we had instances happen at school where, you know, Dante was confronted with a bully or whatever, and he handled it. The phone rang, I thought, "I don't want to get this phone call," and he handled it like a champ. Walked away, you know? "No, I know better than that. I know how to handle myself, and I'm sorry you're on that trip, but that's not my trip." And walked away like a champ. So, I just think in this day and age, when we focus on all the bad things, all the time, there's so many bad things. There's also so many good things. So please find in your precincts, or I don't care, find one in my precinct, find someone in the town that you can bring into Town Council, that makes us feel like we're connected as a community, that makes us focus on our goal, which is being an accepted, accepting and warm community for, you know, all races, all religions, all cultures, all languages. And that's my New Year's resolution, is to reconnect that way. So, I'm going to let Eric take it from here.
Thank you very much. Would you like to join me down at the podium?
We're going to switch seats. You're going up there to do some laws. No, I'm kidding.
Well, first off, I want to thank all the kids that came in. You guys were amazing. Very good job. Watching all those somersaults makes my back hurt, so, you know, enjoy it while you're young. And I want to thank you for coming in.
Thanks, sir.
As a token of our gratitude, we have a certificate for you, and I'll read it. "Town of Barnstable Town Council does hereby recognize Keith Rosery as a Barnstable hometown community hero. With the greatest respect and gratitude, Eric R. Steinhober, President of the Barnstable Town Council, have hereon to set my hand and cause the official seal of the Town of Barnstable to be affixed this 18th day of January 2018." Congratulations and thank you. Thank you. All right. Now we go into public comment, see if anybody can top that.
Eric.
Yep, Councilor Breeden Bender.
I just want to add something. First of all, I want to thank Councilor Cullum for this suggestion. I think it's a great idea, and it does connect us more closely to the community, which I think is extremely important. I also want to thank the dojo and his class. I first want to thank you. We live in a culture of celebrity, and one of the things that drives me crazy in this day and age, that people hold up folks like the Kardashians and others, even our multi-multi-million-dollar sports stars on a daily basis, and look to them and think that they're heroes in our culture. And the people that I get wrapped around and I want to applaud as heroes are everyday people in our town who do amazing things like you do. You know, as a parent, and at one point, a single parent for quite a few years, I know that it was the community that helped me raise my child, and the teachers that brought my daughter through the ranks. I owe them an incredible debt of gratitude, and it's people like you that touch our children's lives that make such a big difference in who they become as adults. And so I want to thank you for dedicating your time, as you do, and being a role model for them. And to the students that you brought this evening, I want to thank them for all their hard work and their dedication, and for the fact that you guys and girls are going to be the future. I mean, you are the future. We're not the future. We're holding time and passing it along here, and you guys are where it's at. So you're creating an amazing foundation and starting off on the right foot, so I applaud you, and thank you so much for coming tonight and doing your presentation for us. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other counselors? All right. So now is the time for public comment. If anyone from the public wishes to speak, please come forward, sign in, state your name, and please limit your time to three minutes. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Oh, okay. That's okay. Go ahead.
Do I sign in right now, or can I sign after? Good evening. My name is Spencer Knowles. I'm actually a resident of Sandwich. Thank you for allowing public comment this evening. I'm actually a co-founder of RegulateCapeCod.org, and it's quite a diverse event tonight, the youth of Cape Cod, and now I'm here to talk about regulating safely and smartly cannabis, which obviously is here whether we like it or not, and our group feels that it's a responsibility and duty, both of citizens and of town leadership, to seriously consider regulating cannabis smartly and safely, which also includes proper zoning. So there is a letter from our group introducing our group to you all. It's in your folders. You can read it at your leisure. I was going to take the time to read it, but then after I did, it was over three minutes, and I was as fast as I could possibly read. So instead, I'd rather just speak to you all directly and offer our group's assistance in collaboration and dialogue to take on this challenging issue that we have. This is my generation's prohibition. This is something that five years ago, if you had told me, being a Norwich Corps Cadets grad, which was my dojo, learning a lot about leadership and values, being a wholesaler in Massachusetts for 10 years in fine wine, that I would be talking about regulating cannabis, I told you, I would think, I would tell you that you were crazy, and I'd probably laugh. But here we are. It's 2018, it's a brave new world, and I just respectfully request that you take our letter seriously, and that you can engage our group, whether it's individually or as a smaller group, to discuss both smart and safe zoning, but also how we feel about the new black market that is taking hold here that I think a lot of folks aren't really aware of. So, I won't take up any more of your time, but just want to introduce myself to the group officially, and I hope that we can work together moving forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to speak? Going once, going twice. All right. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Any counselor response to public comment? Councilor Cullum?
Yes, thank you, Spencer, for coming in and for the letter. I think it's an appropriate time for us to be discussing how we zone for the future, considering the people voted on the issue. And I know Barnstable has, as long as I've been a counselor, and I'm sure long before that, Barnstable has always been very proactive in looking at these agenda items and taking them very, very seriously. So thank you for coming tonight, and thank you for introducing yourself to the rest of the group, and I look forward to conversations coming up. Thank you.
Any other counselors? No? All right. We're going to move right into Town Manager Communications. Town Manager Mark Els. Welcome, Mark.
Good evening. Mark Els, Town Manager. This is the Town Manager's update for the period of December 22nd through January 18th. We're proceeding with the tasks in the Budget Action Plan. We've concluded our meetings with staff to discuss the proposed change in the FY19 operating budget, specifically restructuring anticipated next fiscal year, and we anticipate bringing forward those modifications to our organizational structure to you in March of 2018. I thought I'd just pause for a moment. I was on Channel 18, and I took the time today to go over some of those structural changes. The major changes that we'll be proposing are really focused on aligning our resources in our organization with those priorities that are laid out by you and your strategic plan, also looking at where our priorities are in general, so that we can accomplish what we're tasked with. Last year, you know, we made several changes, a minor one with the Youth and Community Center, really integrating it into the Recreation Department. We also made a major move with shifting building over. One of the proposed changes in '19 will be to shift health with building, and so those two will be aligned. That helps us in many areas of customer service, e-permitting, being able to efficiently and effectively deliver permits, and so you'll see that being realigned. We're also looking to shift Conservation Commission under Planning and Development. There are many commonalities there, as well as resources available to provide more support to our Conservation Division. So that, we feel, makes good sense in being able to move people through those processes in those respective departments. What will remain is licensing and weights and measures as a much smaller remaining department, but basically, what is known as regulatory services will no longer exist moving forward. We're also looking at, another major move is to shift the Marine and Environmental Affairs Division out from under Community Services and having that as a department, well beyond just the marine services that they offer. We all know that we've embarked on a comprehensive water management plan for our community, and certainly, at the director level, the Marine and Environmental Services Department needs to sit at the table with us as we plan for how we're going to manage our five major watersheds and the activities that occur within those, whether they be dredging projects or aquaculture, or general use of our ponds and lakes and waterways. It's critical that they be at the table with us in our senior planning. So, we saw that as an opportunity to, again, realign existing resources so that we can focus on the priorities of our community. We're also looking at, but the major changes may come in 2020. We'll see how this minor change goes, but we're going to prioritize asset management in the sense that we're going to take our property manager and a staff member and put them directly under the Town Manager's office. And so, it will raise that in its more broad interaction with all that we do in providing, in managing the assets we have, and understanding how managing those assets interact with the delivery of services and programs that we offer in the town. How we later align, a lot of the work falls with Public Works right now, some of it in other departments. Everybody is a recipient of what we do and how, in the way that we manage our assets, all that municipal government does. So, you'll be hearing more about that. If you see something, if you have questions, please ask me. This isn't an effort to cut staff. This is an effort to realign resources so that we can try to achieve the priorities that are laid out in our strategic plan. So I thought I'd take, then we briefed staff. I'm beginning, I bet we actually reached out and spoke with the chairs of the various committees that the staff support, so that this wouldn't be a surprise. Nobody needs to be afraid of this change. This is a change so that we can do our jobs better. And next year, hopefully, we'll conclude it with asset management, because you know, whenever you change things, you're not as effective. You've got to change it, get it back in place, and let people do their jobs. So, we don't want them focusing on the change. We want them focusing on accomplishing all we need to do. So we are right on task here with our capital budget, operating budget, on schedule. Couple of announcements relevant to finance. The FY2018 abatement applications are due in the Assessors' Office by Thursday, February 1st of this year. Again, FY2018 statutory exemption applications, including residential exemptions, are due in the Assessors' Office by Monday, April 2nd, just as a reminder to everybody, in case they don't have that noted in their book and it applies to them. The Government Finance Offices Association has announced that the Town of Barnstable has received the GFOA's Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for our budget. This award looks at 14 mandatory criteria with a focus on how well the budget serves as a policy document, as a financial plan, as an operating guide, and as a communications device. And this is the 17th consecutive year the Town of Barnstable has received this award. This is a national award. Mark Milne's led that effort, so as much as it may say Town of Barnstable, Mark Els, I truly believe that the reason... I truly believe that the reason that this occurs, besides the fact that our town leadership and council take the time to establish a strategic plan, which is critical to us being able to align our resources with what our priorities are, is the fundamental budget that our Finance Director and his subordinate and staff create every year, guide us through the preparation of, and allows us to bring that to you, Town Council, for review and approval. So initially, Mark called me and told me, you know, we received this. And I said, "Well, great." And then I called him back and I said, "Mark, congratulations. We should not minimize the fact that this is the 17th consecutive year. We should celebrate it and say thank you every time we get it, because this is substantial." And again, thank our staff for all the effort in that accomplishment. He's also presenting on Saturday up at MMA, so on, for this association. That's correct, right, Mark? Yes, he is. So he doesn't want, he's very humble, so, yes. I get to deliver all the good news. Another significant event was we met with Mass Department of Fish and Wildlife today. USGS was there, DEP, both Boston and the region. EEA was there, which is, you know, the department that they fall under. And Cape Cod Commission was there with us as well, as well as our own staff, myself, Director Santos, and Hans Kaiser from our Water Supply Division. And we discussed the potential future water supply wells there. I went in with concerns that we weren't progressing, given the magnitude and the timeframe that is involved in this, concerns that it would be easy in such a complex issue not to focus on what really needs to be done, to establish milestones, to set a scope and a budget, to enter into agreement so that we can proceed on, you know, what may be one of the most important issues our community faces, which is clean water for certainly our community and specifically the Village of Hyannis, you know, well into the future. And I'm pleased to say that the meeting went very well. We have the full attention of all those involved. We discussed the scope of work that USGS has come in with their existing models and agreed to work with us, first in a preliminary assessment and then with whatever additional assessments are required to answer the questions that we would have done if Fish and Wildlife weren't really even involved here. Basically, you've got a Water Management Act that you deal with, and then you've got a water supply permitting process through the region of DEP that you have to answer and address all aspects of what's required to site a future potential water supply well. So there, they were there. We discussed that relevant to what USGS and Fish and Wildlife were asking us to do, because obviously, there's a time and a financial commitment to this. Everything that they're asking us to do, as stated today at the meeting by the regulators that are involved, is required as part of that process. So we're not being asked to do anything that goes off in scientific investigation or anything else. This is part of the core of what we would need to do to cite future potential water supply wells. That was a big concern of mine. In addition to that, they came up with about 35% budget support for what we're doing. We didn't even ask them to do that. And this is on the modeling side of what we need to do. As we continued the discussion, one of the fundamental concerns I had was that we really need to get out there and address some quantity and quality issues. That's what I went to the former Commissioner and asked two years. Well, I think it was just after Thanksgiving, but before Christmas, a couple of years ago, so more than two at this point. And the answer was no. And so we regrouped and we went back under the new Commissioner with, I think, a little more attention from above as to the priority of public water supply. They've come forward and they said, "Yes, you can sample for quality. Yes, we will enter into access agreements with you, whether it be utilizing existing wells or if we need to install more wells." We found out that there are existing wells out there. They're of different ages, though, so we really gotta look what's out there. But they're gonna work with us on this, and they're gonna let us move on this. So we're gonna have, really concurrently running here, the development of groundwater models as well as quality information. To really get into pump tests, we need to work with DEP Water Supply in kind of the tail end of this phase into the next phase so that we can do what is specified. Really, at this point, I don't know how much you know about, it's just not Fish and Wildlife property. It's a very complex, there's a very complex pond system out there with rare and endangered species that changes in water elevation are actually key to their survival, not in the negative sense. It fluctuates and therefore, they survive and they, you know, come out during certain periods and then they go dormant in others. It's a very complex environmental system. So they want to understand, number one, can we make this balance work? And then, number two, okay, when we can, where do we want to put the wells and how much do we want to pump out? So that's really the two phases. All of that are required by the Water Management Act. All of it would be required by DEP Water Supply. So from my view, at this point, we're in a very positive position to move forward. I expect that we'll break into subgroups at this point. Ruth Wall and I will be meeting with their attorneys about the access agreement and about kind of an intergovernmental agreement as to how we're gonna do this with really the town. And USGS has two primaries, because they're really giving us a product we're gonna use in moving forward with potentially citing a future water supply there. But with Fish and Wildlife as a recipient as well of products there, DEP stepped up through Southeast Region and said, "We'll pay for the analysis for the quality." And we didn't ask for that either. So there's a very, it's a complete change from where we were. The other individual I can't thank enough is Tom Cambrieri from the Cape Cod Commission. Tom has been an expert in this area for decades, if you know him, certainly across Cape Cod, recognized throughout our state. And he's been at the table. He's run preliminary modeling already for us, so we could bring that to the table and talk with USGS. He works hand in hand with them now anyways. And so none of what he's done is wasted. It all needs to be proved out and reviewed. But I think we're in a much more positive position now relative to this matter than we even were three months ago. So from, I think, all of our standpoint, that's a very positive thing and a very different message that I have to deliver than I did six months ago. So, good news. We've also signed into the intermunicipal agreement for the watershed permitting in Poppin, Satchoe String Bay, and we're gonna be bringing forward the next steps to obtain the watershed permit from DEP. Again, this is a new process for the state, so we're gonna be leading this. There isn't anybody else who's done it. I believe we're gonna have to designate lead management people, and then the three communities, Sandwich, Mashpee, and Barnstable, will all come together and make this application relevant to the permit. So to a certain degree, it'll be, you know, kind of an actual event in permitting, but it'll also be a little bit of an experiment and a learning experience, I think, for us. But we knew that going in. So we're also having the same discussions with Yarmouth about an IMA and potentially a watershed permit for Lewis Bay. But that's been signed. It's progressing. We received $150,000 from the Community Compact Cabinet Grant. The Baker-Polito Administration gave out these grants relevant to regional efforts for going out there and finding better, more cost-effective ways to deliver service. In the case of Barnstable, Dennis Howard, and Yarmouth, who received the grant, and we gotta thank Yarmouth. Yarmouth stepped up and said, "We want to lead this effort. Barnstable, will you come with us and support us?" Because truly, without Barnstable in a regional effort, it changes the whole equation on most things. So they said, "Will you join us?" I said, "Yes." We went forward. We received this money. We're gonna be looking at bio, we're gonna be looking at solids that come out of the wastewater process. Individually, it makes no sense for us to try to go beyond putting them in a state where we put that product that we produce. We basically ship it out in a liquid form right now, and it gets incinerated in Rhode Island. It's hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. This is from our wastewater treatment plant here in Hyannis. What we're gonna be doing is evaluating if we collectively bring those solids together, is there potentially a place to cite and is it cost-effective to try to do this at a municipal or a group municipal facility, a regional-type facility, and save us money in the process? We know wastewater is going to be certainly an ongoing challenge for us. So that's what the focus of the use of these funds will be. I've enclosed a letter from Vineyard Wind notifying my office that they are filing, and they filed the environmental notification form to the MEEP, or the Mass Environmental Policy Act, office regarding their proposed wind farm project. I gave it to you so you can read through it. I'm sure you will get questions. We want to keep you current on where we are. Charlie McLaughlin has been our point person on this. He will continue to be. The comment period is through January 30th. I know he's drafting any comments that we have. I don't know at this point that they'll deviate substantially from what I said in the letter that said, "We're interested," but we have some concerns. And I identified two major areas of concern. I'll keep you advised as we progress on this. As a side note, I had sent a email. The Commissioner of Fish and Wildlife and I actually communicate on a whole bunch of stuff. It's amazing how many things we have in common, relevant to Cape Cod. And so he and I are emailing back and forth, and Vineyard Wind, if you hear anything about this, I know our Director of Public Works and Legal Department knows this, but Vineyard Wind asked me for our easement from the Bike Path project that crosses the Fish and Wildlife parcel. Now, we all know how complex this relationship is with Fish and Wildlife. So I didn't want to imply that, "Oh, yeah, it's fine. Run your cable through the easement." So I said, "No, you can't have it." And the Commissioner, and I sent that to the Commissioner as well as a presentation that they had done before Town Council. So when I saw him today, he pulled me aside. He said, "It was just, you know, we have this dialogue back and forth." And he said, "Thanks for sending that to me. There's a whole story behind what's going on with this one in Mastioti." And, you know, he said, "Thank you," because we're not agreeing to them running that cable through. He goes, "We've got these issues all over the, you know, all over the place, and they're national issues as well in other states, and this needs to be thought through very carefully. So thank you for not thinking that was just a minimal request." And my concern there is, I want to keep solid relationships with Fish and Wildlife. So I'm not saying no to the project. People are suggesting that. I'm just being very careful on the town's behalf as this progresses. So when I communicated that, they're coming in next week, I think Vineyard Wind, to talk with me, so we'll have another conversation. It's not a public hearing. A public hearing. I left off the ing on that one. Sorry. Was held on January 3rd on proposed changes to the town's shellfish, eel, herring, aquaculture rules and regulations. I forward the Town Manager's approval of these changes to the Town Council. This approval will take effect 30 days from that notice. The notice was on January 10th unless the Town Council disapproves it. This is an annual review of the regs and basically, and I've included the support information from our staff. This went through Shellfish Committee. These are updates that we want to make sure that our regs are conforming with what the state regs say primarily. So that's what this is. And I've given it to you. If you have any questions, I know you haven't reviewed it, but if you have any questions, by all means, ask, and if I can't answer, we'll have staff available. Finally, I've enclosed a public service announcement relative to a temporary signs-on-public property announcement that we put out. The reason that we put that out was, we got a lot of people calling from the election on till the Christmas festivities who saw their signs disappear. We didn't throw them away, but there is actually a formal process that you're supposed to go to the Building Commissioner if you put these out, tell them where you're putting them. There's a limit on how many, and basically, then you can do it. So, and then we're also asking people to be sensitive to where they put them. Now, election signs are different. That's a whole different issue. Though, actually, the people who ran were very cognizant of where they put their sign. But in some cases, they create clutter, they block memorials, and we really don't want to see that. We want a little thought put into where the signs go. So that's what the Building Commissioner enacted formally. It was always on the books. But we got a lot of calls, so they said, "Can you put out a public service announcement?" We said, "Absolutely." Somehow, this has morphed into something to do with the intersection of Old Stage Road and 28. Has absolutely nothing to do with that. And we told the press that, and then we read it in the paper, that somehow it was related. So I don't know what to say about that. That's misinformation. They, those people doing that actually have a adopt a spot agreement that they are required to comply with. So if they don't, then that would be another issue. But it has nothing to do with what the Building Commissioner has done. He's here with me tonight, just in case you all have any questions. So I don't know if I covered it adequately, but I won't make him come up to speak, but if you have any questions, he's here to speak. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mark. Any questions or comments for the Town Manager? Councilor Hebert?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mark, I just want to thank you, and I'm sure Dan Santos is involved in this also, the continuing conversation with the Town of Yarmouth in regards to wastewater and, I believe it's a biodigester is what we're talking about, and anything that saves us ongoing funds, and I believe they can also produce electricity out of it, but they do need our stuff to make it work. And so I'm part of the wastewater collaborative, representing Town of Barnstable, and it came up at our last meeting, and I was really proud to be sitting there, knowing that our team was on top of it and working with Yarmouth. And it's very, very exciting and has a lot of potential. So thank you very much.
We've got a lot of good discussions going on with our neighboring towns, so that'll continue.
Awesome. Thanks.
Councilor Flores?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mark, thank you for that report. As always, well done. It makes me proud to be a councillor in Barnstable when I hear the kinds of activities that are ongoing on a regular basis. And, you know, sometimes we take some things for granted, but hats off to you, your team, for making all of these really great choices, decisions, and moving the town forward in a most positive way. And towards that end, I'm just curious, when we talk about abatements, do we, in fact, through the Assessor's Office, offer any kind of educational component so people really understand the abatements that they might be eligible for? For example, do we do a workshop at the Senior Citizen Center, which I'm now the liaison to the Council on Aging, so people understand that there might be a possibility that they could get their taxes cut back a little bit? If we don't, I think it might be something I would suggest. Because when you read the tax, you know, we all get our tax bill, and you read all of the abatements on the back, they're all by chapter and verse, and most people are probably overwhelmed and don't realize whether or not they might be eligible for one of those abatements relative to their annual property tax bills. So I would maybe suggest that, if that's a possibility. And also, regarding signs, being responsible, a responsible councillor in Precinct 1 along 6A, 6A is a haven for little signs, whether it's a road race, whether it's a yard sale, whether it's a community picnic, especially during the summer. We even have signs that, you know, advertise the county farm and some of the things that they're selling in there. And there's always been the question of how that relates to the Old Kings Highway rules and regs coupled with, coupled with the Building Department. Is that clarified? Do we have an educational component of that so people really understand what it is we're talking about? Because I get a lot of questions from constituents in Precinct 1.
I would say historically, it has been more, it has been more issue-focused sorts of education. I mean, I'm sure that, you know, in the various opportunities that our Finance Department may have to go out and talk about abatements, they educate. But I don't know of direct programming that we have to educate our public. I mean, we use all the methods, Channel 18 and various public meetings, but I would defer to Mark Millen to ask that, answer that in more specifics. I think that at any point, we're more than happy to go out there and have those conversations. So I'll talk with him about how we can better on the sign issue. I think that it, again, is related to whatever is occurring. It was a councillor that actually brought to our attention the concern about the memorials. And so we got together and we said, "Okay, who should this fall under specifically? What communications, and what have we done in the past, and what's the best way to proceed?" And came up with, you know, really just utilizing what we already had on the books, but I don't know, you know, how effectively we had been administering that. I could have Brian come up and try, between Brian and Elizabeth and Ruth, I'm sure they can answer the relation between Building Commissioner and Old Kings Highway a little bit better than me. I'm not positive what review. I'm not positive what review is required there. So I don't know. You still here, Brian? You want to try, you want to take this one?
Sure.
All right. Thanks.
Good evening, Town Council. Brian Florence, Building Commissioner. The Old Kings Highway Historic District has regulations and requirements for signage. Issue comes in with the temporary signs. I think those are the ones you're talking about, the road races. Counselor Flores. Technically, they're supposed to be regulated by Old Kings Highway. In fact, some of you may know about some of those signs on Sunset Lane. In fact, you yourself, Counselor Flores, know about those.
I'm leading the charge.
Yeah. So we're, you know, we're working with those. Problem is, we're not all knowing, all seeing. So a lot of times, the enforcement of that ends up being by complaint. When we had the issues with the signs over the course of the summer into the fall and through the holiday season, we went out and I asked our guys, "Bring back five signs a day." And we're going to contact and communicate with the owners. Those were on 6A, those were in Osterville, Centerville, Hyannis, every area of the community. And we continue to do that. But if there's something out there and you see something out there that needs to be addressed, by all means, we'd like to know about it so we can take care of it.
But what I'm hearing tonight is that in the future, if in fact the Barnstable Village Association or the Barnstable Historical Association or any of the village associations per se, if they're doing a special event, a house tour, a fundraiser, whatever the case might be, they technically have to go through Yard Department in order to get a permit or approval to put those signs.
Yes, sir. There's a registration process. It's always been on the books. It just wasn't formally utilized, so we just kind of made, we wrote a policy. I believe in policies so that someone can open the book and say, "Okay, this is what we're going to do about this situation." And so that's one thing we've started establishing in the building department, and that's one of them.
I might suggest that you send to all of the village special groups, whether it's Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, whoever it might be, maybe a copy of that policy so that people know it.
Happy to do it. And it's one of the Centerville Civic Association that caused us to consider this PSA here.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselor Wallace.
Thank you. Thanks, Mark. A couple of questions during your meetings with the E O E E A.
Sounds like old McDonald.
The, was, and I understand from your discussion that sometimes with Fish and Wildlife, you don't necessarily stay on the topic of the 250-acre parcel, but you've talked about other things and places where you cross paths with this particular agency. Has there, with respect to the E O E A, was there any discussions on the ENF or the MOU with respect to the shooting range?
Not today at this meeting, but there was this week by Attorney Wile and myself.
And also, there's something interesting with the respect of Fish and Wildlife. When they brought in the rail trail from West Yarmouth, we had to have some 400-foot setbacks, I think, around some existing wells that were there. And they required us to guarantee some conservation restrictions, as I recall, to protect the hunting areas that were in close proximity to where this was. As we progress with that rail trail, and we, right now, the current plan that I understand is it runs right down the service road from Exit Five down towards Exit Four. And if, I don't know if this is something that would involve these people, but I believe that National Grid is planning on putting a gas line up through that same place. And if there was a way that we could maybe coordinate the construction of the gas line and the construction of the rail trails so we wouldn't have to dig up the ground twice, it might save us some money and be something to look at.
If you'd like, there's an enormous answer to that, and then there's a real short one. So we've been, we've been engaged in that now for several years, from myself personally through our planning and through our engineering and DPW. In coordination, Bud Dunham and I, the Town Manager and Sandwich, have met with the gas company, talking about what they can and can't do, what they can and can't afford. So yes, we are, we are in negotiations with them. They are planning to bring, we need the gas, we need the gas upgrade. You know, we have real limitations on gas availability. So the question isn't, I guess, whether they'll bring it down. It is, how are they going to bring it down? And how much of the bike trail might fall over that gas line off the roadway? Their preference, because of the costs that they've incurred in Sandwich so far, is to put it under the roadway and perhaps widen the road and create shoulders for bikes. They're not really looking to continue to install a separate bike path for the remainder of Sandwich and then up to the power lines right at Exit Five on the service road. That's basically the scope of their, their project. So, but we're still in negotiations with them. Whether we get some sort of financial support toward that directly from them, or whether they physically are involved in the construction is the ongoing conversation, so.
Okay. Thanks, Mark. Appreciate it.
But that's ongoing, but if you wanted more detailed brief, there's a lot of information. Be more than happy to share it with you individually or collectively.
Thank you.
Counselor Bean Bender.
Hi. I just have a very basic question. It relates to the signage, because it came up at the Centerville Civic Association meeting. Are there any fees attached to the permits at all for signage? So it's just a straight permitting, paper process? That's it?
It's so the building commissioner knows where these are going to go and for how long and how many. There is a limit on the number.
Yep. Yep. Makes total sense. Just wanted to make sure if there was a fee or not.
Yeah.
Great. Thanks.
No, nothing on that one, on any version of a temporary. No, I didn't think so. No.
Any other counselors? Vice President Crocker.
Congratulations. We're seemingly really making some progress with the water issue, and that's key for everything. And the time spent is paramount to our health as we go forward. I would like to ask a question through you of the building inspector, if I could, regarding signs. How are you tonight? Occasionally, we have events in the community events, I guess I'd call them, kids' car washes, so forth and so on. We obviously are trying to respect the monuments squares, but if we had a manned individual there saying, "Car wash this way" or something, that's not in the same bailiwick of sticking one in the ground. Am I correct on that assumption?
That's correct, Counselor Crocker.
Because that's a weekend's event or something. But there are so many people that raise funds that way for all of our children's activities. I just wanted to make sure people understood the criteria of who needs to come forward, somebody who intends to plant the sign and leave the sign. Am I correct on that assumption?
Yeah, you are. And even the ones that are planted, there's no mechanism to say no. We're not looking to say no. We're just looking so that when we get a call from the public that says there's, you know, 300 signs on one corner and it's all the same event, we can't see around the corner, cars are going to crash, or that there's a memorial site there of some veteran or something along those lines, that, you know, we know where they are so that we can go out and address it and see if there is a violation or an issue that needs to be addressed. But somebody holding up, kids holding up car wash signs, no, that's not an issue at all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselor Flores.
Yes, just a quick follow-up question I forgot to ask. Along 6A, this might be for, it might be for Dan or for Mark or for Brian. It's a simple question. As they are digging up 6A, when I say they, meaning the gas company and replacing gas pipe, they are literally destroying the road. Is there a plan to go shoulder to shoulder when they resurface? Because right now, there's about a two-foot strip up and down 6A going pretty much from Commaquit all the way into almost down to 132 in some areas.
Certain sections of state, certain sections of town?
Oh, no, I know. I understand. We own between Unitarian Church and Old Jail Lane. I get that. But, and I don't know, I haven't seen much activity there, but it's the state road. So does the state plan on coming back and resurfacing that area? Because really, they're making a mess of it.
I'll have to ask. Director Santos may know, but he may not. We can ask the question. And depending on the scope of what they're going to do, would, would they need a road cut permit on town roads? So that discussion would be, the Department of Public Works would come in and look at that. I mean, it's always preferred to have curb to curb, because even a half a road doesn't look great. But on the other hand, you'd rather have a half a road than a trench. So it's always an ongoing discussion with all the utilities that are subsurface.
It is all trenching now because it's already a lip.
Yeah.
And I'm getting calls on it.
We'll find out, and I'll have
Thank you.
Dan get back to you all.
Thank you very much.
Any other counselors? No? All right. Well, thank you, Mark. I also just want to lend my thank you to the leadership you've been giving us with Fish and Wildlife. As you said, it is absolutely one of the most important things we can do. And if it comes to be, as we hope it will, I mean, we're securing water for decades to come. And we'll all be gone, but we'll still be pumping water out of those wells, we hope. And I want to thank Mark Milne as well. You know, Mark does a fantastic job. We're lucky to have him as our finance director, and hats off to you for your continued great work. Thank you very much. All right. We're going to move on. Vice President Crocker, could we please act on the minutes of December 21st, please?
Yes, Mr. President. In our packets, we have Town Council meeting minutes, December 21st, 2017. I move to approve of mass drafted.
I have a second. All those in favor of approving the minutes of December 21st, 2017? And any one abstention? Counselor Dagwan. Thank you. Now, we're going to move on to communications from elected officials, boards, committees, staff, commission reports, correspondence, and announcements. And I just wanted to kick it off. Many are aware that we had a school committee vacancy back in early December, and the leadership of the council and the leadership of the school committee have worked together under the direction of our town charter, which details how we go about filling this vacancy. And a subcommittee was formed of counselors and school committee members. We publicized a date certain to have interested applicants to submit their resumes, letters of intent, which was January 12th. And the committee consisted of myself, Counselor Flores, Counselor Cullum, and for the school committee was Chairman Chris Joyce and Vice Chair Stephanie Ellis. And the committee convened just this past Tuesday evening, the 16th, and Counselor Flores was elected chair of the subcommittee. And I want to kind of turn it over to him for an update of how that meeting went and where we stand in the process.
Well, it was an excellent committee, as President Steinhebel suggested. Counselor Cullum, school committee man, Chris Joyce, school committee woman, Stephanie Ellis, and myself. We interviewed actually 11 candidates, three of whom were chosen as finalists. And in alphabetical order, they were Barbara Dunn, Edith Lebran, and Suzanne Conley. Barbara and Edith have had career experiences in kindergarten through grade 12. They were career educators. And Suzanne Conley had career experience in higher education administration as a former university vice president. The process now is basically for a joint meeting of the Town Council and the school committee, which will be held on February 1st. The three finalists, the three folks who I just mentioned, they will be interviewed publicly. And at that meeting, a vote will be taken by the school committee, followed by the Town Council, to actually move one candidate forward as the chosen person to fill that seat that was opened up when Margo Weber recently resigned. So with that, I want to just thank my fellow council members, school committee members, Chris Joyce and Stephanie Ellis, for a process that was, I thought, complete, a process that went in depth in terms of really probing what these applicants were all about and what they would bring to the table. And I think we were completely transparent in terms of how we approached it. So I applaud my fellow members of the committee for that. And I think we have brought forward really three top-quality candidates. I don't think, I think any one of them can serve with distinction. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your leadership on the committee as chair. I thought the evening went well, the process went well, to get through 11 candidates. And I know the members of the school committee have spoken to them. I spoke with the chair yesterday. Very pleased with the process to date, including Tuesday evening. So thank you very much. I believe the zoning committee is going to have an update closer to an actual item on the agenda. So we're going to move into other announcements. Counselor Rapacek.
Thank you, Mr. President. A little further information regarding the Vineyard Wind Connector. The comment period, as Manager Ellis said, has been extended to January 30th from, it was supposed to end January 9th, it's been extended. I need to just give people information that you can send your comments, which they prefer to receive them electronically, to purvi.patel. That's P U R V I dot P A T E L at state dot M A dot U S. Her phone number is 617-626-1029. Or you can mail your comment to her attention at the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs, Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, that's the E E A, Attention MIPA Office. And you have to make sure, and that's to 100 Cambridge Street, Suite 900, Boston, Mass. 02114. Make sure that you reference the ENF number, which is 15787. And for more information, you can go on the mass.gov site and go to the MIPA site. And you can view the entire file in the environmental monitor dated December 20th of 2017. They will, there will be an E I R decision and comments, preliminary decision, on February 9th of 2018, and their final decision will be rendered. This is just the ENF decision will be rendered on February 16th of 2018. I've received questions about how the process goes. So if anyone needs further information, they can contact me or now you have it out on air. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other counselors? Counselor Schnep.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Counselor Levesque and myself, I'd like to let everyone know that on January 27th, that's a Saturday, from 4:00 to 6:00 o'clock, the Marson's Mills Village Association will be hosting their annual ham and bean supper. And we, not quite a celebrity, but we do have our master chef that will be in the kitchen carving. I will be out, I think, busing. And tickets are available at the Marson's Mills Library. It's a very popular event, so hope that you might consider it. Thank you.
Come early and often. It does sell out, from what I understand, so. $10 suggested donation.
Great. Thank you.
And that's to benefit, by the way, excuse me.
Yeah, go ahead.
That's to benefit scholarship for the, for our high school seniors here at Barnstable.
Fantastic. Counselor Hebert.
Thank you, Mr. President. As part of my work with the collaborative on the wastewater, I'm working on two special issues. One, I'm really trying to promote the increase in the laboratory capacity of the county to be able to test water. And their specialty, really, which was clarification for me, I was pushing for us to be able to get some of our other water testing done there, the seawater, the abatements. And it was made clear to me that it's two different animals in some ways. So we do have actually a very sophisticated piece of equipment that has not been put into use. So I'm really pushing to get that into use so that we can get fast, quick results in testing any of our wells or any of the water that we want tested here in the county level. So I'm working on that. And another thing is through Randy Hunt's office, and now with Senator Seer, and we're asking Rep. Crocker to join us so that we form really a team with the investigation of a drainage pipe on 6A, which is in West Barnstable. There's an easement from the state for the drains, the road drains, to go into this downfall pipe that passes through private property. So partly because of concerns from a resident, but also partly because of my role in the collaborative, Randy has really helped lead the way to ask the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to look into this easement that's been there for 90 years. And it originally was just supposed to let water go through. And what I'm saying to the state is, help us to verify that the water that's gone through there in 90 years is not adversely affecting possibly our water in that area or the land or the soil. There's a lot of sediment that's gone through, and gone through. And they've done extensive testing of the drainage system, and we all had a copy of that. There were some issues of concern, but they never went past where the water's been going for 90 years. I've never seen a report on the quality and the condition of the soil and the water in that area. So in all due fairness to all of us in this town, we need to look at what's happening with the drain water that's passing by. We have to look at these emerging chemicals that are cumulative. Road runoff is going into that land. So we're working diligent. And I'm happy to say that we have the cooperation of our entire delegation to Boston working on this issue. So, thank you.
Thank you. And just to add on to that, through the town manager's office, we've actually asked the state to look into all of these pipes. There's many of them through towns all over the Cape, on the state roads, 6A, 132, 28. But how are they handling which basically amount to just pipes with road runoff? And we hope to, you know, keep pushing them to help us, you know, address all these issues throughout our entire, you know, state roadway system down here, not just in Barnstable, but the Cape. Any other counselors? Counselor Beedenbender?
Hi, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to make a preliminary announcement. I will be bringing this up again. But in May, it is going to be the annual celebration for our Barnstable High School seniors. It's the event that they put on. It's an alcohol-free safe zone. Basically, they just kind of lock the kids up in the high school for an entire evening following the prom. And it's a great event for the kids, but it is quite labor-intensive. It also costs a fair amount of money. So I'm letting you know now because they are looking for support from the community. It is a community event. It does involve a lot of organizations, businesses, you know, just residents. And so if you're interested in helping out in any way, I encourage you to get on board early and help. If you go to the Barnstable High School website and go to Parents and Students, the Drop Town tab, it takes you to celebration, and it gives you a heads up on all the ways that you can be involved. So we will be reaching out to local businesses for support for things like raffle items. We need people's talent. We need your treasure. So if you want to donate some money to help make this possible—it is an expensive event. And it is at risk of not happening if we can't raise the funds. So I just want to give everyone a heads up. I will bring this up again. So just wanted to give you a notice ahead of time. So thanks so much.
Thank you. And Counselor Raporessi just mentioned that we believe that they are collecting money at the transfer station this month, the recycles.
Yes, thanks for bringing that up. And as a matter of fact, it's just till the end of this month, and they are having a hard time filling the weekday slot. So if anybody is listening or watching out there, and you have some time during the day, please go to the Barnstable High School website and sign up for a slot. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other counselors? All right, then we will move on to orders of the day. Under old business, Counselor Raporessi, could you please read 2018-052?
Yes, Mr. President. This may be acted upon. 2018-052, reappointments to a board committee or commission. Resolved that the town council reappoints the following individuals to a multiple-member board committee or commission. Shellfish commission. Albert Supernott is a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2020. Board of Governors of the Steamship Authority, Robert R. Jones, as a representative member of Barnstable, to term expiring 12/31/2020. As written. Or 2021. Thank you.
Do I have a second? This is item 2018-052. All those in favor—this is the reappointments to board committee and commissions. All those in favor of this item? And that is unanimous. Moving on to new business, Vice President Crocker, could you please read and refer to a public hearing on February 1st, 2018, item 2018-054. I believe it's on page four.
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. Under new business and referring out to a public hearing on 2118, it's item 2018-54, order to amend the Chapter 168 Regulatory Agreement District Map to include map 311 parcel 092. As a point of clarification, since we're using the assessors' map and parcel, it would be the Kmart—what we all deem to call the Kmart Plaza. And this was referred to our committee of reviewing zoning and permitting regulation and received a unanimous support tonight.
All right, I have a second. But before we vote, I wanted our Director of Planning and Development to give us just the information about this. We'll have the discussion on it at the next meeting. This isn't a discussion session. It's for info only, also for the public to hear about it. So if they wish to come to the public hearing on February 1st, we have the information now. So welcome, Elizabeth.
Good evening. Thank you, President Steinheber, Elizabeth Jenkins, Director of Planning and Development. And again, just a brief overview of this item. It does look at eligibility, the geographic eligibility, for entering into a regulatory agreement with the town. And of course, a regulatory agreement is a tool that the town has in its toolbox. We're enabled by the Cape Cod Commission Act to enter into these agreements. It does allow the town to enter into a contract with a property owner, a developer, an eligible party under which a qualified applicant agrees to provide certain public benefits. And additionally, the permitted uses, densities, and all other aspects of the use of a property is negotiated with the town invested in perpetuity. So I think, you know, a lot of times when I think about the regulatory agreement, I certainly think about it in the context of the growth incentive zone. It's been an important tool to be able to enable the goals and further the goals of that growth incentive zone. But it is, in fact, tied to, again, a separate section under the Cape Cod Commission Act and a geography that's adopted as part of the local ordinance, Chapter 168. So the boundaries are largely concurrent with the downtown Hyannis growth incentive zone, but you can see they extend beyond it in a number of cases. They also include downtown Centerville. So this item, the item, again, before you for first read this evening, looks at potentially expanding eligibility to enter into a regulatory agreement to that Cape Town Plaza, Kmart Plaza property. And certainly, we're all familiar with this. And we understand that this is a parcel that prevents—presents, I think, tremendous economic opportunity, really for the town of Barnstable and the whole region, obviously, under utilization there. It's certainly unique in that it's a town-owned property under the custody and control of the Barnstable Municipal Airport. And I also think it's, again, generally known that it's—the rights to use that property are held under a long-term lease that expires in 2024. So certainly, the lease term has been a barrier to getting new investment. So we're working actively—the town is working actively with the Barnstable Municipal Airport to think about solicitation of proposals for those lease rights beyond that date. And certainly, why—many times we—the majority of the time—we rely on our zoning to, of course, to reflect the uses that are permitted on a property. In this case, where we are going out for RFP, and again, thinking about the potential there, the, you know, the changing—the changing, again, nature of the retail market. And again, understanding that the town and the airport want to be able to solicit proposals that would represent highest and best use for that property. This, again, puts another tool in our toolbox in this geography that would allow—that would allow an interested party to enter into a regulatory agreement with the town in this case.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth. I appreciate the information. And I'll just reiterate, Vice President Crocker, the zoning subcommittee of the council did look at this, and we're unanimous in recommending this go forward to a public hearing on February 1st, 2018. So thank you for providing the information. So I have a second. So this is item 2018-054. All those in favor of moving this item to a public hearing on February 1st, 2018? And that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Vice President Crocker?
The committee not only recommended to go forward to the meeting, but they also are in favor of it as drafted. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Point of information, who's on that committee for the public?
I'm the chair of the committee. Counselor Raporessi is on it. Counselor Paula Schnep, Counselor Matt Lavec, Counselor Deborah Dagwan, and Counselor—I should say, former counselor, Hank Farnham. Everybody was in attendance, and everybody voted unanimously.
If I may with a follow-up, it's long overdue, and I'm looking forward to voting on it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Lavec, could you please read item 2018-055?
Thank you, President Steinheber. The item number 2018-055, transfer order of $250,000 from the remaining funds under Town Council Order 2011-067 for the dredging of Mill Pond and other related costs, as written.
Thank you very much. And we have Director of Public Works, Dan Santos. Welcome, Dan.
Good evening, Mr. President, town counselors. Dan Santos, Director of Public Works. It's been understood for some time that dredging is a potential way of helping to ameliorate nitrogen in freshwater bodies. And because of that, back in 2011, there was a town council appropriation to look at doing just that in Mill Pond in Marsins Mills, attempt to dredge, to improve the nitrogen situation. There's a lot of nitrogen in that whole Marsins Mills River system that's entering the Three Bays system and creating a situation where we have finfish and shellfish, habitat issues, there's eelgrass that's non-existent, and many other issues that have occurred in the decades—the past decades—which needs to be resolved. And the state, as you know, with the 208 program, has done a lot of pushing with that, and we've done a lot of work with that. We've been waiting for almost the last year with a committee on the nitrogen issues in this area, particularly the Mill Pond, and come up with a number of things that we're going to proceed on in order to resolve this. And one of them—a major part of this—is dredging Mill Pond. And the reason we're asking for this transfer order is because where it was understood for a while that this would—this could help by dredging the pond for the nutrient and nitrogen situation, it's—there's been studies in the last year or two that really confirm that this is a fact, that we can get extensive nitrogen removal by having that pond dredged. Now, that pond now is probably on the order of about a foot or less in some spots. It was originally an eight-foot pond, and we would propose to dredge that back to that original depth. And by doing that, basically, you have a lot more water there, and you increase the retention time. And the process is such that when you have this retention time, the nitrogen—it's a denitrification process that goes on. So, anyway, what this transfer order allows us to do is to do the work we need to do to permit this activity. Another aspect of this, which I think is positive, is that the reason that—in the past—that we halted work on this was we really hit a permitting brick wall on this. There was no interest in the state in moving this ahead. That situation has changed. I think our conversations with the state, they're much more willing and interested to listen to us and to possibly permit this. And I think there'd be a good likelihood that we will be able to move ahead on this. So this transfer order allows us to do all the work we need to do, basically the preliminary work, because this is mostly private property. The town does butt this pond, but it's a private pond. So we need to resolve some of the ownership issues. We need to look at legal issues, permitting, preliminary, sampling, design. And that'd be the scope of the work that will occur with these funds. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the dredging is key to addressing the issues. And I think another effect of dredging Mill Pond is you're really increasing, you know, the value, you know, for those private owners around the pond as well. Any counselor discussion on this item? Counselor Schnep, you go on the order I started.
Thank you. I think this is a great project, and I'm glad that we're moving forward with it. Has there been any thought to what has caused the sedimentation in the first place? I mean, if we are successful in permitting and dredging, are there going to be things that are going to contribute again if we don't do other actions?
Well, it's—basically, it's several hundred years of sediment moving in a river system and deposits in what's a pond. So we'll dredge it, and in a couple of hundred years, more, we might have to do it again.
Counselor Beedenbender?
Just two quick questions. You mentioned that in the past, you'd hit a brick wall with the state. Just curious what changed, why the state was more receptive this go-around?
Well, I think they see the value of doing this in that while—in their issue is with some endangered species, is a bridle shiner that resides in that pond. And I think there's ways to mitigate any impacts to that. And not only mitigate, but you're improving a situation. And I think they see the benefit of that and the wisdom of that.
And where do all the dredge materials go?
Well, that'll be determined. We got to do a lot of work on that, and that'll be part of the work we do.
So you do analysis on the dredge materials?
Oh, yes. It depends on the chemical composition of it, and we have to de-water it, and then where—can we reuse it? Ultimately, our goal would be to spend as little money as possible on getting rid of those sediments. So if we can reuse them, that's going to be an ideal situation. So part of the permitting will be exactly that. What do we do with those dredge—dredging materials?
Counselor Flores?
Thank you, Mr. President. Dan, just a couple of questions. First one being, the actual dredge itself. I mean, the permitting process is going to take probably, what, a year, two years? I mean, it's a long process.
Yes.
And by the time we get to the point where the pond actually gets dredged, do we own a dredge for—I'm curious, what kind of a dredge do we use in a pond, unlike what we use in Barnstable Harbor or other places? Do we own one, or how does that work?
We don't own one. Again, I think part of the initial analysis is going to be looking at exactly how we would do this. That—because that pond is so shallow and that muck is there, it's really actually almost a quicksand-type of material. It's dangerous. If you were out there in a boat and fell out, you might not come back. It's really a very soft, mucky. So we would need to look at the engineering aspect of how that would occur. But we'd have to either bring something in or create something that could be stable, move around the pond, and dredge, and then move that material to a place where it could be de-watered and then go to its ultimate disposition. But we don't—I don't have the details of that at this point.
Above and beyond this $250,000, which is primarily permitting, what do you project as the expense for the actual dredge and the disposal?
Right now, I don't have a cost estimate on that, primarily because of that, what we do with the dredge material. So this is something that's going to be a big range. And again, if we can use the material, we'll bring that cost way down. But this is—you know, this is not a hundreds-of-thousand-dollar project. This is probably in the million-dollar range, order of magnitude. So it's not an inexpensive—however, what this ultimately does is maybe able to save us money down the road with other wastewater issues, because we need to take the nitrogen out of the system. And this is probably one of the least expensive ways to do that. The most expensive is to create, you know, pipes and treatment plants. So anything we can do that's innovative. And we're looking at a number of things in this system, not just this. We're looking at restoration of wetlands. We're looking at stormwater improvements. We've gotten grants for that. We're looking at aquaculture, how that might be used. So the combination of all these technologies and techniques and innovative things, hopefully, is going to save us many millions of dollars down the road.
And we have the scientific evidence that suggests and confirms that by dredging this, eventually, it will have a positive impact on the Three Bays?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks, Dan. With respect to the dredge, could we then expect that there would be nitrogen mitigation that would be happening along the Marsins Mills River and down into Prince Cove because of that?
Yes, exactly.
So this could be a big cost saver for us, say, several years away, with these non-traditional methods of mitigation?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Counselor Raporessi?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Dan. I'm looking forward to seeing this begin eventually. This is a whole system, all connected. And there's mention of dredging Warren's Cove. This does not include that dredging. Are you going to be coming before us soon for another item to dredge Warren's Cove and to do those restorations on the cranberry bog?
Yes, as information has developed. And we're working very closely with the state right now, DEP, and the Barnstable Clean Water Coalition. In fact, Assistant Director Steen and Z. Crocker went and visited the state last month. And we're trying to get information from them as to exactly what we need to do to permit this. So we're not chasing things that aren't going to bear fruit. You know, how many— You know, how many borings do they need? Where do they need them? So, we're trying to get that information from them. In fact, they asked us for a paper on all of these issues that you just brought up, and we've been working on that, and in fact, tomorrow, I'll be sending that to DEP so that they can take that and work with their groups and figure out and get back to us exactly what they're going to require. So, we're moving this ahead as quickly as possible, and as soon as we get those details, we can start formulating projects on the restoration of wetlands, the other bog system above Mill Pond, and the Warren's Cove issue.
And then ultimately, put some shellfish down, down into the ocean?
Right, we're working closely, again, with, with the county, with the state, the Nature Conservancy now. We have very talented and very knowledgeable people in town on aquaculture, and so we've been meeting with them, try to look at what's the best way to do that. People have been talking about oysters for a long time. Well, there's other, there's other shellfish. There's Cohogs, there's Mussels, there's oysters, and is there a way to use all these systems, not rely on just one? And how do you grow them? Where do you grow them? There's the bag system, there's on-the-bottom system. This is the issue with Warren's Cove. Can we dredge Warren's Cove, which is up above the Three Bays proper, use that as possibly a nursery for shellfish, which then get distributed elsewhere in the system and perhaps used from there? So, there's lots of opportunities, and we're working on all these on a parallel basis right now.
Great, thank you, good to hear.
Councillor Levesque?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks, Dan. Obviously, I just felt the need to comment just based on the fact that it's in my precinct, and I've met with the mans and the main butters of the property, and, you know, they, they obviously have some concerns, and I'm sure they'll, there's a time to address those, but the pond itself, the dredging is mainly just going to take on the deepest part of the, it's not going to start necessarily in the marsh area, correct? It's going to be mainly just for the main body of the pond?
Yeah, the pond proper, yes.
Okay, thank you. That's, was my one question. Everybody else addressed my other questions, thank you.
Vice President Crocker?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'm fortunate enough to serve on this committee with Dan, and I'm very happy to have Dan with us. As you know, Dan was instrumental in cleaning up pollution at Otis, and what he brings to the table is tremendous. But what we have is a bunch of individuals who've been circling this train for a number of years. So, what you have is little Jimmy, who's now the wrangler on the committee. So, our job is to see that we don't defer approaching and resolving these issues in the estuaries anymore. We have forever turned our back on spending the money. And then we have a conversation with the shellfish people that we open up East Bay for the first time in 28 years. What did we do in East Bay that opened up East Bay and took all the crap or scum layer off the top? We dredged twice in three years, and that's all we did. We didn't eliminate nitrates on the, on the grass, we didn't slow down any development there, we didn't put together any new runs of the septic issues or sewer. So, really, we have a chance to do something that starts at the very top of where the pollution enters and then fills this embayment. And what we're really talking about is if we get the top clean, to keep it clean, the aquaculture can come forward to a place where it can't go right now. So, we really have to get to the top of the hill to catch everything that's rolling downhill and to improve the situation. This money is a re-appropriation from 211. It was designed for some site, some type of purpose of this in 211, that was six years ago. We haven't spent any of the money, we haven't done anything, we haven't cored anything, we haven't got any hard proof of some of the documentation. We have samples that have been brought forward to our committee, but we don't have the basis, and going to DEP to understand what they really want for the permit will save us a great amount of time, money, and energy in getting this permit. So, we're going to hear a lot more of this, because the first estuaries are only the beginning. As our manager's brought forth, we got the development agreement, I should say, the estuary agreement, with Sandwich and Mashpee for that side, and Papaneset is a mess. We have, we have a pretty good mess over on the Lewis Bay side, and we certainly have contributions into the central river that we haven't addressed, other than just the very mouth, which is East Bay itself. But we're long overdue addressing this. If they ever reclassified our estuaries, we would change all the classification of who pays taxes in Barnstable, I can tell you that. So, this is an issue that you're going to hear the wrangler keep pushing on, because we need to get to the bottom of this and get these things resolved for our livelihood as we go forward. Thank you.
Councillor Wallace?
Move the question?
All those in favor moving the question? And that is unanimous. This is item 2018-055. All those in favor of this item? And that is unanimous, thank you very much. Councillor Cullum, could you please read 2018-056? I believe it's on page eight.
Yes, uh, let's see. Item 2018-056, acceptance of a grant in the amount of $3,476 from the Carolyn Fries Fund of the Cape Cod Foundation to the Barnstable Youth Commission, as written.
Thank you very much, and we have Lynn Point, Director of Community Services here, welcome.
Thank you, President Stein, Hildur, councillors. This, we are very grateful that the Caroline Fries Fund of the Cape Cod Foundation is offering us a grant of $3,476 for the Youth Summit and the Community Prevention Forum. Every year, we have difficulty raising funds for this event, which is something that the Barnstable Youth Commission puts on. It is proposed by the students of the Youth Commission, it's organized by the students of the Youth Commission, and it's implemented by the students of the Youth Commission. So, it's really, it's a ground-up activity. The Caroline Fries folks have been very generous, not only to us, but they also gave us $5,000 for the Hyannis Youth and Community Center gift account, which is for program and equipment needs within the youth center. Now that the facility is a number of years old, there are certain things that need to be taken care of, replacement of ping-pong table, refelting the pool table, replacement of some of the games that have been used, and getting some new games in. And they also gave $15,000 to the Jonas Shea Basketball Program, which is not one of our programs, but it's run out of the Hyannis Youth and Community Center, and it's specifically for girls' basketball programs. So, we are extremely thankful to Chris and Wes Fries, who are the parents of Caroline, who is a student at Barnstable High School and also a very active hockey, girl hockey player. And so, we hope that you'll be supportive of this acceptance of this grant.
Thank you, Lynn. Any councillor questions or discussion? All those in favor moving the question? And that is unanimous, this is item 2018-056. All those in favor of this item? And that is unanimous, thank you.
Thank you, and I just want to let you know that the Community Prevention Forum will be on Thursday, March 15th this year, and the Youth Summit will be on Friday, March 16th.
Fantastic, thank you very much, they do a great job.
Lynn, can we ask the location of that?
We are planning on returning to Cape Cod Community College. The Tilden Art Center will be the home of the Community Prevention Forum, and it's throughout the college that the Youth Summit takes place. And what we do is we actually bring the entire seventh grade from the Barnstable Intermediate School, we bus them over to the college, and they have a variety of different programs that they participate in, and we provide them with lunch.
Councillor Raporessi, could you please read item 2018-057?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is new business may be acted upon. Item 2018-057, authorization to expend $10,000, a $10,000 grant from Mass Wildlife's Habitat Management Grant Program, as written.
I have a second, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. President and councillors, Darcy Carley, I'm the Conservation Administrator, and I'm going to be introducing Martin Wonderly, he's our Conservation Agent. Martin gets the credit for taking care of the paperwork on this grant, and it's important that we continue our control burning in town, and Martin will be overseeing the project. Thank you.
Good evening. Martin Wonderly, Conservation Agent for the Town of Barnstable. I do have a short, five-minute background presentation, if that's okay to show that.
Yep, go ahead.
I think I have to go turn the computer back to a little slideshow.
Mr. President, I believe this is the first time Martin's been before us. If he wants five minutes, doesn't he have to bring us $100,000, not $10,000?
And it's not in the conservation budget. So, we were awarded this grant for the Mass Wildlife Habitat Management Program for this year. It has to be expended by the end of this fiscal year, and it's on a reimbursement basis. Just as a background, fire is a natural occurrence, it's been going on in these red areas on the map for, forever. And in the red areas, you have an annual return of one to seven years of fire would be expected to naturally occur, whether, due to ecological or climate conditions. Barnstable County created a wildfire risk preparedness plan in 2012. The Town of Barnstable is shown here with areas of low, moderate, high, and extreme wildfire risk. If you look in the lower-left corner of this map, Crockerneck Conservation Area is in the red, extreme risk of potential wild, catastrophic wildfire to not only the ecosystem, but potentially surrounding residences. We were funded by the Barnstable County Wildfire Preparedness Grant, I believe in 2014, and we had a, we were, we purchased a burn plan for Crockerneck Conservation. It was provided by Northeast Forest and Fire Management, LLC. As part of the plan for Crockerneck, they outlined the area with the red line on the eastern half of the conservation area. In the next year, we received money to conduct a prescribed burn, and it doesn't show up very well, but we burned in November of 2015 the yellow horn-shaped area in the northern part of that conservation area. In 2017, we were able to get another prescribed burn done just on our conservation budget in that large, dark-red area in the middle. We hope to conduct prescribed burns on the green areas at the north and southern end of the conservation area. This will restore natural pitch pine oak woodland habitat, which is, benefits variety of wildlife and threatened species in this area, and could also help reduce the chance of catastrophic wildfire to this ecosystem that would, could potentially spread and damage neighboring homes. So, there's a multifaceted benefit to this project. This was looked into by Conservation years ago after the county wildfire plan, preparedness plan came out, specifically because of the highly flammable marsh reeds and grasses that are on the eastern side of the conservation area. I've pointed out where the homes are in the surrounding area on this map, and the burn plan that was created by Northeast Forest Fire Management uses the access road and Santuit and Katua Cove Road as a fire break, and that's why they drew that area to be focused on for conducting prescribed burns. We hope to burn the green area because we have a Mass DEP Wetlands Protection Permit to conduct this type of activity within that distance of a wetland area, and that was approved by the Conservation Commissioners in 2014. This is, these are photographs of Crockerneck area, you can see the fuel load on the ground, and you can see quite dense understory growth. That's what it looks like if you don't let fire happen. This is a problem in, in many parts of this country where fire has been suppressed from its natural occurrence or from thousands of years of management by Native Americans. These are photos of a prescribed burn occurring in two different years by Northeast Forest and Fire Management, LLC. They're, they're all trained, they all have their certificates, and they do a great job. It's a low-burning, slow-burning fire, and there are many factors that go into allowing the fire to occur, permitting through the Mass DEP air quality, the, the weather conditions have to be just right, you don't want to affect any neighbors. Just another picture of the, of the controlled burn on top, and then you can see what immediately after the flames moved through on the lower photograph there. Three months after a burn, the ground, the grasses are coming back. One year after the burn, you have a nice, low ground cover, reduced fuel amount, and you're, you're good for another five to 10 years, hopefully more, but. So, this, that's the background of this particular idea behind conducting prescribed burns in this type of habitat. So, if there are any questions on this particular grant project, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you for the presentation. Any councillor questions on this? Councillor Raporessi?
Thank you, I just had to ask one, and I, I know the answer, but I have to ask it anyway. No, no chance of burning any of those fragmites at the base of the, of the, I mean, no, I'm serious. That's done, that's a method to eradicate fragmites.
Right.
And there, I would think they're a pretty serious source of, of fuel for fire, but you don't do that, do you?
No, that was, that, that was the intent for the original permit under the Mass DEP to do something about removing this invasive, but the money's not there. There are multiple methods, you mentioned fire, that's one of them, extracting the plant material, digging, cutting, poisoning the plant. Northeast Forest and Fire Management doesn't get into, into wetlands for, for doing their burns, for whatever reasons, whether it's too dangerous, it could ignite instantly once you get it going and it jump across that marsh a little too quickly. So, we initially had intended to do that with a chemical and physical removal of the plant, but it's just, it was, it's too expensive, it's not going to happen, and the next best thing is to do controlled burns in the surrounding area to reduce the chance of wildfire from happening.
Yeah, okay, thank you, and I appreciate your previous burns, how you worked with the fire department and alerted the neighbors when it was going to happen and kept me informed, that, that was great, thank you so much.
You're welcome. We're, we're working with the Katua Fire Department with Chief Rhodes to also provide a reverse 911 calls before we do these burns this year. We hope to have two days of burning this year.
Thank you. Councillor Flores?
Yeah, just an obvious question up. The fact that you are hiring an outside LLC fire department, so to speak, to basically do the burn and control it, I'm just curious, from our own local perspective, do all of our particular prudential committees and fire departments train for, God forbid, a fire that might occur here? Does CUM do it, does Katua, they, they were all prepared to do that?
This, these burns were conducted with Katua Fire Department onsite in coordination. They will be at this particular burn, or these days of burning as well. I know that the manager of Northeast Forest and Fire Management, LLC, goes way back with Chief Paul Rhodes and Katua, so. And they're trained, and they also love to do this for more training, the Katua Fire Department.
Just a point of information, thank you.
Any other councillors? All those in favor moving the question? And that is unanimous, this is item 2018-057. All those in favor of this item? And that too is unanimous, thank you very much. Good to see you. Come back again soon. Councillor, yeah, Councillor Hebert, could you please read item 2018-058 and refer to a second read on February 1st, 2018?
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number 2018-058, amendment to Section 241-17 of the Administrative Code, the Housing Committee.
I have a second, and this is item 2018-058. All those in favor referring to a second read on February 1st, 2018? And that is unanimous. Councillor Hebert, could you continue on to the next item? Item 2018-059, please, I believe it's on page 15.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number 2018-059, resolve approving the housing development zone and zone plan for submission to the Department of Housing and Community Development. zone plan for submission to the Department of Housing and Community Development.
Thank you very much. We have Arden, Arden Caden, who's a housing specialist and Director of Planning, back to do the presentation, thank you.
Good evening, again, councilors, Elizabeth Jenkins, Director of Planning and Development, and Arden and I are here this evening to present for your consideration proposed adoption of a incentive program that's provided by the Commonwealth, the Housing Development Incentive Program, which provides, again, incentives for the development of market-rate rental housing, and this program is available to gateway cities across the Commonwealth, again, to provide tax incentives to help bring new market-rate projects forward. So I'm going to turn it over to Arden Cadran, our housing specialist, to talk about some of the details of the HDIP.
Good evening, councilors, Arden Cadran, Housing Coordinator, Planning and Development Department. As Elizabeth mentioned, I have some more information about the Housing Development Incentive Program. It is a state housing initiative whose goal is to increase the supply of market-rate housing, diversify our housing stock, and positively influence economic development. This incentive comes in the, it comes in two forms, a state tax credit and a local option tax increment exemption. This program, however, is slightly different than most other housing programs, other housing incentives in three ways. As Elizabeth mentioned, it is only available to gateway cities. It is for market-rate housing, which is extremely unique, most incentive, financial incentive programs are affordable, are for affordable housing. And this program is not automatically available to developers to apply directly to the state, the state asks the community essentially to buy into the program first. They want us to create a zone and a plan. So the zone is a designated geographic area where this incentive will be eligible, and then the plan is a document that just provides some additional information about that area. It asks us to document the need for market-rate residential housing, and to describe the conditions within that zone, mainly some prior public and private investment and some potential future investment. So the municipality has much more of a direct role in making this program available to developers. It is a financial incentive program only, there is no regulatory effect on any of the proposed projects within, within the zone. So the zone that we're recommending is the same as our downtown Hyannis Growth Incentive Zone, the GIZ, so it's the exact same geographic boundary. The GIZ already has many tools in place to promote additional, and encourage additional market-rate housing, encourage additional development, so it really made sense for this program to mirror that zone. And this is an additional important tool for the town's goal of increasing our housing stock. The plan, as I mentioned, documents the need for additional housing, unfortunately, that was pretty easy to do. Our housing needs assessment and the Cape Cod Commission's recent market analysis clearly proves the need for additional housing stock. And then the plan goes on to describe the zone, the boundaries of the zone discusses some recent public and private investment in the zone, and some of our future expected development. And then there's some additional maps you'll see in the plan that provide some visual interpretations of this. So the steps needed, tonight we're asking the town council to authorize the town manager to move this plan forward to the Department of Housing and Community Development, who needs to also approve the plan. And then, should they approve the plan, developers are then eligible to apply to the state for housing tax credits, and to apply to the town for local tax increment exemptions. And I am available for any additional questions.
Thank you very much for the presentation, Counselor Flores?
Just two quick questions, who determines market rate?
The, it's a proposal that's submitted as part of the developers' approval process, they are asked to do a market study. The state asks that the rents be above what is considered market in that geographic area based upon the study, the market study that's submitted by the developer.
Okay, thank you.
And it can change over time.
And my second question is, the developments that we have recently been discussing in, possibly approving, one being, for example, sea captains, would that development be eligible to receive tax?
That's exactly, that's exactly the type of development that would be eligible. So that development's eligible because it is market-rate housing. Other developments that potentially might be mixed use, not all housing, they're also eligible, they, only the housing portion would be eligible for the tax credits, or a mixed income development, where some were market-rate and some were affordable, they, those would also be eligible for this program on a prorated basis.
Thank you.
Counselor Rap Grisetti?
Thank you, Arden. Is this retroactive, so someone, for instance, David Dumont's project could not be eligible?
No, they need to get approval for their project from the state before the shovel hits the ground.
Before the shovel hits the ground, okay, thank you.
Counselor Snapp?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Arden. So there's obviously two pieces to this, there's obviously a state tax credit that's being made available, and then there's the local tax incentive exemption. How is that all figuring into our proposal, and will we be brought individual examples in which we have to evaluate that we're going to grant tax exemptions?
Certainly, so the process will be, a process needs to be set up, so there'll be some, hopefully, through the town council and through the town manager's office, a set of guidelines and a process, and then applicants, that will provide information to us to share with applicants, and then applicants can come forward. So the plan needs to be approved first by us and the state, and then that process can begin, so projects will come forward with a request for a tax increment exemption.
Does the state require that the local government provide a tax exemption?
No, they are independent of each other. You're not required to, the local government does not need to give the tax increment in order for them to access the state tax credits, they're independent of each other. They're both available to developers, but they do not need, one is not dependent on the other.
And how do you anticipate the process in which we're going to make some decisions about providing that local tax? I mean, I, my senses, I'm looking at our finance folk, you know, that this has some revenue implications. We are also providing incentives for market-rate housing, which we've identified as a need in our community. However, how much of an additional incentive is required to create market-rate housing, which by definition should be sustainable because it's market-rate? You know, the rents, you know, it should not require a lot of additional subsidies?
That would be...
If I may, maybe our finance director might be able to clarify a little bit of this, because it's similar to, you know, our TIF program, which we've had for a number of years.
It's very similar to the TIF program, and we anticipate a process very similar to the TIF program being set up. Those would be the kind of questions that would come to the developer when they were asking for the increment exemption, and their financials would be obviously examined. And then there's all levels of, I just want to add, there's all levels of market-rate housing, so this might be somebody who's keeping it at the lower end of market as compared to the highest market that they could possibly gather, which might cause the need for additional subsidies.
Mark, did you want to add anything to clarify on the TIF, just kind of how it's similar, the structure of the TIF program? Because it's similar, it'd be similar.
Yes, I would, we anticipate that we would exercise a same process that we're using under the TIF program, have a committee review the application, meet with the applicant, make sure the goals that we're trying to establish are being met, and then evaluate the project's proposal and whether or not it's worthy of a, of a TIF agreement, or a TIE.
Thank you for that, I appreciate it. I had a question, what do you anticipate a state approval process timeline?
They've told us it's a very quick turnaround, they've promised us in about 30 days for the plan to be approved.
30 days, okay. Counselor Cullum?
So I just want to make sure I understand it correctly, so the state can approve or not, and we can approve or not, and then they're independent of each other, so the state may not approve, but we want to?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Correct, and that's for the development, that's for the financial incentives, that's not for the plan.
Counselor Hebert?
Thank you, Mr. President. So it's important to make sure that everybody knows the rest of the story, so part of the rest of the story is...
I don't even know the rest of the story.
Oh, yeah, well, so it sounds very exciting, and it sounds like everybody's going to line up and grab these tax credits. The fact is that all that's been allocated for the whole Commonwealth of Massachusetts right now is $2 million. Oh, 10, 10, of which goes to 13 gateway communities?
16.
I'm sorry?
16, including us.
16, okay, so we're one of 16 gateway communities, so that's a nice designation to have, because it opens up some of the treasury to us. So the assumption is that, you know, we're going, our developers are going to have to work hard if they want to get any piece of that action, and they can limit it, they're going to limit it to different projects. So chances are, not one group is going to get it, but it's, it's a little effort on the part of the state to try to stimulate some more development. So when, when developers run away because they say it's just too expensive, this is a little bit more of an incentive to help them go forward. As with everything, those who participate in new programs start to get a relationship with the state and with these funding sources, that then can open up doors for the future. I did ask the question, I was very concerned, you know, I wanted more development, so I said, you know, it has to be new, but the fact is, it is limited to any group that has not put the shovel in the ground yet, so they'll be able to go forward. So I think it's a very, very good program, and I urge you to vote for this, thank you.
The program recently changed, which is why we're bringing this forward now, it used to be only for rehab, substantial rehab, and they just changed it for new construction, which seems to fit our community better.
Any other councilors? Counselor Flores?
Is the $10 million first come, first served, or is it equally divided amongst communities?
No, but it's first come, first served, it's $10 million annually, first come, first served, rolling basis, rolling basis, there's no deadline.
Any other councilors? Well, Vice President Crocker had his hand up, Vice President Crocker?
Thank you, thank you very much, thank you for the consideration. When you file with the state, are they going to be looking for us to have any parameters on our option at that point? Or they're just going to send it back to us, and then we're going to work on parameters in the program in the future?
Well, they do have parameters where the increment exemption needs to be a minimum of 10%, a maximum of 100%, minimum of five years, maximum of 20 years. Those are their parameters around our...
If we agree to step into the option, they're already predetermined.
Those are the, those are the limits of the parameters that they're giving us, yeah, that's the limit of the parameters from the state for our option.
Is there any opinion that when we look at these particular zoning opportunities, that we are still going to be inclusive of minimum housing requirements, and the 10% rule and things like this?
Inclusionary, absolutely, this does not, like I said, this does not change the regulatory review process for, for a project coming forward at all, it's 100%, it's simply a financing, a financial incentive program. So if it was over 10 units and there were inclusionary units required, this would not eliminate that requirement.
But if it's in the overlay district, the inclusionary could be removed as well, am I correct?
That would be part of their permitting, that would be part of their permitting process.
Yes, because it's a very difficult bar, and we're laying layer on layer on layer, we're trying to really get these developed, as I, as I hear from you, I hope, I hope really that's where we're headed with this whole proposal. Thank you, the limitations are very important to me, thank you.
Counselor Snapp?
Yes, my question was answered by Mr. Crocker.
All right. All those in favor moving the question? And that is unanimous, this is item 2018 dash zero five nine, all those in favor of this item. And that is unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Rap Grisetti, could you please read item 2018 dash zero six zero, and refer to a second read on February 1st, 2018?
Thank you, Mr. President, first reading for item under new business, item 2018 zero six zero, appointments to a board committee or commission, resolve that the town council appoints the following individuals to a multiple-member board committee or commission, Old Kings Highway Historic District Commission, Polly Brazelton, Barnstable, as an alternate member to a term expiring 6/30/2018. Shellfish Committee, Patricia Farina, Hyannis, as a regular member, holding a family permit to a term expiring 6/30/2020. Water Quality Advisory Committee, Barry Galas, Kattua, as a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2018. And Zoning Board of Appeals, Kyle Evanco, Barnstable, as an associate member to a term expiring 6/30/2018. This is referring to a second reading on February 1st, 2018.
I have a second, this is item 2018 dash zero six zero, appointments to a board committee commission, all those in favor of referring this to a second read on February 1st, 2018? And that is unanimous. And that ends the orders of the day, our next regular meeting is February 1st, 2018. Do I have a motion to adjourn? All those in favor? Have a good night, everyone.